The Township of Washington Planning Board. Adequate notice of the meeting was given in accordance with the open public meetings backed by the board secretary to at least two newspapers on January 3rd, 2025. And this meeting has been posted on the Township Board and Board Electronic Message Board, WCTV, and on the Township website.
Thank you, Grace. Slap to the flag.
By the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the public, which one is in motion? On the motion, and then we will deliver the people and justice for all.
Local?
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Murphy is absent. Mr. Palito?
Here.
Mr. Tool?
Here.
Mr. Toro?
Here.
Mr. Wojdranski is absent. Councilman Almond?
Here.
Mayor Kalamari?
Here.
Chairman Sabino?
Here.
Let the record reflect also in attendance our attorney, Lou Lamatina, engineer Paul Azalina, and board secretary Grace Galish.
If you can give me the public portion?
To participate in the general public portion of the meeting, please click the link below to join the webinar. You will be asked to state your name for the record, and we ask that only one person speak at a time. This public comment portion is only for non-agenda items. Time is set aside later in the meeting to address questions or comments about current agenda items. If you are participating by phone, press star I to raise your hand, and star six to unmute. At the end of the general public portion, no further general questions or comments will be accepted.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the public portion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Global favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There is no one in the audience this evening? Do we have anyone on video that would like to make a comment?
No one is indicating a comment.
Okay, we have no comments from the video. Do we have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Global favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to new business. The application that was supposed to be presented this evening has been deferred to a future meeting?
November 5th.
November 5th?
Yeah, next meeting.
Next meeting? And so there is no new business to discuss this evening.
Going on? The attorney has waived the time of his opposition rule, and we don't have further notice of that date.
Also, Mr. Wojdranski has arrived.
Okay, let's make the record show that Wojdranski is here.
Excuse me. I didn't understand that he's waiving his right to notice, or he doesn't have to notice?
No, but the time for us to make a decision. In other words, I don't know if it expires. We have 120 days to decide the application, and if it goes beyond that, he's waiving that.
Thank you.
Did you have an email for that, Grace, simply?
Yes.
And then there's no further notice. Like, he's not noticing for the next meeting.
Does he have to?
No. Not if he now says this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, on to old business is the discussion of the draft ordinance 25-20 regarding the demolition. Demolition ordinance, because everyone on the board is aware, we have previously approved the demolition ordinance. It went to the mayor and council, then came back to us with additional comments that the mayor and council wanted the planning board to address. Since that communication, there's been a number of meetings between the town administrator, the town engineer, I think Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, who were also involved in some of the conversation in addressing the mayor and council's comments, in addition to obtaining obtaining input from the town's attorney, Siobhan Bailey. So based on all the conversations which have occurred and input over the last couple of weeks, the draft ordinance, that is before the planning board this evening, the objective is for the board to review the draft as it stands today, having gone through review and approvals that I just mentioned. So at this point, what I'd like to do is solicit the input of my fellow board members as to the completeness and accuracy of the draft as it stands this evening. If approved, it will then be sent back to the mayor and council for their review and approval. Councilman?
Yes. Section 1, step 1, the length of existing dwelling at first floor level. Is that, is there a common understanding of what that means? Meaning, is it measured at the, like the sill plate? Is it measured at the top of the first floor? Is it measured a foot from the grade? Just out of curiosity, is that defined, or how is it defined? And does it need to be defined? The exemption at the bottom of section 1 does not include detached garage, storage shed, gazebo, et cetera. Just if there is an enclosed porch that's unconditioned, or a three-season room that's unconditioned, is that part of, considered part of the structure, or is it not? And then lastly, you know, I guess the, this talks a lot about prior to doing the calculation or prior to the work commencing. And if I recall, the issues, some of the issues we've been dealing with are changes to the plan, expansion of scope, things of that nature, I guess Beach Street and Ridgewood. So unless I missed it, is there a lever here that says if there is a change to be approved, that they have to come back to the zoning or plant, you know, the zoning or construction and say, you know, we found termites and we have to take down another? So should we put a lever in that requires that? Those were my comments.
Okay.
I guess your first comment for the exclusions, we could put deck in there as well. Right, that would solve that issue, the question that you're...
Well, we probably should include deck.
I'm agreeing with you. No, no. But in the exclusions, right?
But should enclosed porch? But how are those treated? If there is an enclosed porch or a three-season room?
An enclosed porch has a roof, right? And that's a drainage area, right? Well, how would you? Would think that would be part of the structure.
Lou, I think this is your, if I'm not mistaken, did you come back to the team with some of these changes?
No, I think, I'll pull, I'm sorry. I was gonna say.
Pull.
That's me, yes, yes. Basically, what I did is I put into words the procedure that I had employed when I was doing the building department reviews. And there is some level of judgment that the zoning officer or the construction official would be making, but here it's spelled out what we're talking about. So I would consider an enclosed porch part of the structure. So whether you're measuring it at the sill plate or the top plate, it's gonna be the same. It really is, I think, simply put, is just the perimeter of the structure.
Okay.
So.
Not including the deck, right?
Well, when you said deck, you're not talking about the...
I'm not talking about it. I'm talking about a deck that's attached to the side of the house.
Right, no. So that would not be included because that's not part of the building. It doesn't have a roof. So the way building is defined in our code has a roof.
Okay, well, that's, that's right, that's right. All right, thank you.
So I believe that this'll, this'll work. Like any ordinance, there is some judgment involved that the zoning officer or the construction official will be making, and they'll then direct the application to the appropriate board. So I think this'll work.
In the definition for building, that's earlier in the ordinance, right?
Correct, that's in our zoning.
Okay.
Yep.
From your perspective, and maybe, you know, it's not within your specific scope, but change, you know, changes to the plan or expansions of the scope, would that typically be, maybe in some of your other towns that you work with, would that be?
Really, that's the, the construction official, that's his purview. So he would have to be aware of, you know, what the approvals were. And then, but that's not to say if, you know, if it were a planning board application that we were involved with, typically if it's at the planning board, they're saying they're knocking it down, so there wouldn't be any vehicles. So it really would be the zoning board applications or the direct building department applications that would have, you know, the potential for something to go awry. But I think with any ordinance, there's really no such thing as a perfect ordinance, that there's always gonna be something, you know, if there's some language that you wanted to incorporate, I'm sure that that could be accomplished. But that was not brought up in the current review.
Sure. I mean, I don't know what, if there are other comments.
Any comments? Well, Lou, I keep saying Lou. I look at, I look at Paul.
Who's much taller than you? I don't know if you noticed that or not, but...
Yeah. But Paul, so are you comfortable with the way it's written right now that it addresses councilman's concerns or questions?
I believe it does, with the exception of the mechanism for things when they're not done according to the original approvals. There's nothing in here that speaks to that.
I would agree.
You have section 4, paragraph E, that gives a construction code official discretion. The event is danger of collapse. So I think what you don't want, councilman, if you have 40% of the structure going down, and they say, oh my goodness, if this isn't taken down, it's gonna fall down, call the construction code official, he says fine, and it can take down whatever else that can take down. If they don't do that, they're a violation, then it should be someone. That's the, that's the trigger, where, you know, they just can't go beyond what's approved. That's like any application.
Understood. How, you know, I guess, and maybe it's not for the code, maybe it's for the process, but it seemed to me that we've had, you know, two or three in the last year that have been before the board, where the scope has creeped or something has happened, and I'm not sure that there is, you know, transparent transparency with the applicant or the owner or the, you know, the construction company to let the town know. And, you know, going from, you know, 45 to 55 may not result in it being an issue of imminent danger or collapse. It may be that, you know, they wanna make the front entrance, you know, a little bigger, you know? It's a, it's a what-if, you know?
What we've had is people say, well, this wall is so bad, we took it down because it's not viable. I think under this ordinance, you have to contact the construction official to say, hey, come on out here, look at this. He or she then says, yeah, you're right, so I'm gonna allow you to take that other 20% down because it's not viable. I think that's in there for paragraph E. Paul, do you agree? Or Lou, do you agree? Do you agree, Paul, that to the paragraph E?
Well, I think that's understood under the Uniform Construction Code, that a contractor is obligated to make the construction official aware of any changed conditions. So the one thing that I did add to this ordinance to kind of guard against somebody that may wanna do something under 2, it says calculate the total length of any portion or segment of the existing dwelling perimeter requiring its removal on either a temporary or permanent basis. To guard against somebody that takes down an old wall, puts the new stuff in that very same day, you know, that would be a basis for, you know, when the construction official comes out to do the framing inspection, he can say, well, wait a second, this was shown to be an existing wall, and now you've changed it out with new without notifying him. So had they observed the decay and deterioration, they would have called him first and said, this is the condition, and then, then they would not be in violation if they got his approval. So that's, I think, sort of addresses what you're looking for there, Michael.
Okay. I think you're always gonna have bad actors, what you have, you know, some contractors with a lot of them say, I don't care, we can find me, I don't care. I'm gonna lose $5,000 if I wait, so they're not gonna find me, that's what we're gonna do. That's where I think we have. Your ordinance is not gonna prevent them. It's a bad actor, and they gotta be fined, and the word's gonna be out there, that you just can't ignore the ordinance. As I remember, the reason to do this is because of the other ordinance was vague, where someone came in and couldn't tell the 50% sample. Now it's clear, crystal clear. Perimeter measure 50%. So I think it serves the purpose to clarify what 50% is. And the rest, it's enforcement. And if he does it, if he can catch it, so much can't catch it.
But councilman, I think the three properties in question, I thought they were, if I'm not mistaken, were they caught by the construction official who went out there with the plans and saw that?
I think they got called. Some people called. When I started seeing it, and then they went out there and found out that they had cut down one or took down one that they shouldn't have, yeah.
Any other comments from?
Just, just one, and forgive the question if it's not where it should be, it just came upon me. Paul, would it be reasonable to say if you're demolishing more than 40%, we should do an inspection when you're done with the demolition to make sure that you didn't cross into the 50% range?
Certainly. I mean, if the building department is able to accommodate that schedule, yes, you could definitely do it. So I think, once they do the calculations, they should have an awareness as to, you know, this guy's at 49.5%.
Right.
Maybe we should watch it.
Yeah, like Lou said, you know, to catch the bad actors, unfortunately.
Yes.
I have my only question.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that, do we have a motion?
Wait, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple things, please.
Please, Mr. Toro?
Demolition.
Agree. Unless the second demolition is a different term?
Is it describing the 50% versus demolition of the whole house?
Oh, that's a good point. Okay. I'll leave that to the person who wrote it, then.
Paul? No, that's not me, that's the...
Maybe a comma should go in there after destruction, comma, or demolition of 50% or more.
Or full demolition.
Yeah.
Or we could say full demolition, yeah. But I mean, a full demolition is demolition of 50% or more. So if we need to spell that out, then maybe on the first part, it should say full demolition, raising, dismantling, and so on.
Got it. Full demolition, okay.
Okay, and then in step 1, the word perimeter is used correctly there. The definition of perimeter is the total length of the outside of a two-dimensional object. I don't think the word perimeter is used correctly in step 2, though, because what if part of the demolition are inside walls? Inside walls are technically not calculated as part of a perimeter of an object. I'm not trying to get technical here, right? But the proper definition of a perimeter, because we talked a lot about surface area in our last meeting, the proper definition of a perimeter is the total distance around the outside of two, of a two-dimensional shape. Can we get caught up in the technicality if we leave that in there as-is, and somebody goes and starts knocking down inside walls and says, well, that's not part of the perimeter? We didn't touch the perimeter?
Can we, can we say something like length along the perimeter? Of removal, something to that, that's all.
If I may, interior wall demolition was never part of the discussion. I mean, that was not really an issue for the board. It was always, really, the whole house. I mean, as long as you leave the perimeter in place, I don't think the board really cares what you do inside the footprint, so...
Okay.
That was my understanding of, you know, what everybody's concerned was, was coming down as opposed to, you know, somebody making this room bigger than the other.
So, so taking that an inside wall, we're not concerned with?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all right.
All right, understood, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toro. Any further comments? Done. So do I get a motion to approve the draft ordinance, considering the insertion of the word "full" before the word "demolition" in section 1B?
I'll motion that.
I'll second it.
Okay. To prove that's consistent with the master plan, which is what our job is to do. So you're proving the ordinance as being consistent with the master plan.
You need a re-motion of that word?
No.
Paul Colber?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Polito?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
Mr. Toro?
Yes.
Mr. Wojnarzki?
Yes.
Councilman Almond?
Yes.
Mayor Kalamari?
Yes.
Chairman Sabino?
Yes.
Okay. Draft resolution passes. Next step is to present it to the mayor and council with their review and approval. Grace passed and appointed Susan. And that is the agenda. The next mayor and council meeting. Okay. Last agenda item for this evening is any board member have any comments? Oh, I missed that. Okay. Do we have everyone? Does anyone have comments on September 17, 2025 minutes? None?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion. I'll second.
Local?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Polito?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
Mr. Toro?
Yes.
Mr. Wojnarzki?
Yes.
Mayor Kalamari?
Yes.
Chairman Sabino?
Yes.
Okay. We're done with that. Any board member have any issues? Comments, concerns? Biffiness?
Two.
Yeah.
Just for the board's knowledge, if you didn't see or hear, the ordinance on parking of boats, commercial vehicles, RVs, was on the agenda and was not entertained by the council. So it is not going to move forward. Just for your information.
They give a reason why?
I think there was.
We had a lot of people attend that meeting who were not in favor of the changes.
Just the public.
Yes.
There was comments around tradesmen that live in our town.
Okay.
And the impact, the negative impact to their business if they were not allowed to park their tradesman in the driveway.
And the shielding caused a lot of concern as well as the lake association or, and individuals who are on the lake had concerns because they store their boats on their property.
Okay.
So it was not thought forward. The second item, do we have a process to identify board members who are not participating at a certain level and we would look to remove them due to their lack of participation? And the reason I bring that up is it came up in the zoning board and they brought a, they asked the council to hold a hearing.
Yep.
Because there was a number of absences by a particular individual. And I guess my question is, do we have a process for that? Do we have a threshold? And do we want one? Or is it, you know, when someone feels that?
Chase the town.
We're almost done.
When someone feels that, you know, it's become an issue that they raise it to the board.
Yep. Now, and Councilman Almond, that question has come up before. And there was in the past, remember, may we had one, one planning board member who, due to work commitments, needed a call-in, called in nor attended in person. And myself and the mayor spoke. And that person, that member did resign from the planning board. And I think, Mr. Polito, you replaced the person that had resigned.
Yes, I.
So is there a formal process in place? Do we have like a procedure? No, we don't. But it's something that the mayor and I.
I believe Councilman Almond is referring to if that person refuses to resign also, as was the case with the zoning board member, right, Michael?
Yes. So it's not, I mean, I realize that we had a turnover because of that recently. This is more, you know, if someone on a rolling 12-month period doesn't show up at 50% of the meetings and chooses not to resign themselves, you know, do we want something in place? Or is it, you know, is it so infrequent that, you know, we're just creating a burden, you know, an overhead that's not necessary and just address it as is? Or when if?
Yeah, I mean, my personal view, my point of view is that it's working. And I don't believe we need a formal process or control in place.
But thank you for raising it.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, great. I just have one other.
Glad I came late. You know, I'm glad you showed. Yeah, and I've been tracking it.
And I'm glad I've been calling from all over the world.
Believe me, you were close to.
I know, I can imagine. But I just want to bring the board members up to speed on one topic, which is the master plan. So the committee did meet maybe about a week ago with Joe Burgess. Joe Burgess is making progress on the master plan. And as you know, one of the major elements of the master plan is the affordable housing plan that he continues to work on along with the mayor, the council to, again, submit the required documentation to the state and have them review it. So while that process is ongoing, Joe and his team is still working on the master plan. Joe mentioned in the meeting that he hopes to have us a draft sometime in early November. And at that point in time, we will schedule other meetings on the draft master plan. Mayor, anything to add?
No, you covered it well.
Okay. Great. So I know it's taking a lot longer than we all anticipated, but Joe's, Mr. Burgess's firm got bogged down with preparing, I think, when he said 50 or 60 affordable housing plans. All of his clients, in addition to presenting the housing plans to the various.
And the state has challenged many of them, which is taking more of a side.
Gotcha. So. There's nothing else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So moved.
Local favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, good night, everyone.
Good night.